Okay, thanks very much, everyone. We're continuing our work session. We have a quorum present. We've just come out of closed session appropriately, made the appropriate motions. Now, the other listed agenda item for tonight's work session was the budget. Let me recognize Wyatt.
Okay.
But before we do that, we'll take the -- make the extraordinary move of inviting one of our citizens to address us on an important announcement. Marty Mazur, who is well-known to all of us. Marty, come on up.
Yes?
Come on up to the microphone here.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for making this exception.
Did you hit the button? There we go. Green light.
But this is such extraordinary, late-breaking news that I have to let everybody know that Creative Cauldron and Alan Naylor have won a Helen Hayes Award tonight for his role as outstanding lead actor in a musical, for his performance in Jacques Brel is Alive and Well and Living in Paris.
Bravo.
And you all have something to do with it. The city should be so proud, and this is going to bring so many people to Falls Church to spend money.
Thank you very much, Marty, and congratulations to everyone involved.
We are very, very excited, needless to say.
Thank you so much for that. So, onto the budget. Wyatt?
The -- a couple of things that the council has, and I want to just go through a little bit of that information, and some changes to the budget since it was presented in April 6th. One of the handouts that was in the council packet was the financial report for the eight-month period ending February 2015. That was a read-ahead. If there are any questions about it, we can answer it. But the main thrust of that is, is that our revenues have not picked up relative to what we've talked about before. So, we think our FY '16 revenue forecasts will hold. There's no new money that's coming in, and we do have some concerns about hitting our FY '15 revenue forecasts, and that's something that we'll just have to address outside of the FY '16 budget development process. But we're going to keep a close eye on expenditures to make sure we end of the year with a -- with balanced expenditures relative to revenues. But again, we can answer any questions, if there are any, on the financial report. We also passed out responses to questions from council. That's just a two-page document. Much of these were handed out at the last regular session, but there are some updates, and there's also some discussion of this material with the Budget and Finance Committee when they met on Tuesday, a week and a half ago. I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. In terms of new material, the schools and the city have worked together over the past several days, maybe weeks, in wrestling with their health insurance costs. And we did solicit a proposal from a pool of local governments in Virginia called The Local Choice, which is administered by Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. They've given us a proposal. It's a very good proposal, and we've accepted it. And we've informed United Healthcare that we'll not be renewing through them, through the COG Coalition. So, this, we believe, will result in better options for employees, at a lower cost for employees for their premiums, and that was the principal driver of the decision. We also are very pleased to note that there are savings in the budget, and those total $507,000 taken together. That's the good news. The bad news, in terms of changes, is that Arlington County has informed us in their accounting of ambulance fees that when they -- in the past, they have noted any address with a false church address, they've given those ambulance fees to us, and they've looked at those more carefully, and drawing the line more carefully around the city's jurisdictional boundaries. That results in a forecasted decrease in ambulance revenues of $136,000. So, the net impact of those two changes, that decrease in revenue erodes the savings that we were able to accomplish with the health insurance change, but the net is about $371,000 of decreased expenditure on the budget side. So, that's, I think, a positive step, and will be a positive change for employees as well. The Budget and Finance Committee is well aware of our worries about WAMADA, and we have identified that because of a combination of decreased gas prices, and so that means less tax revenue that goes to pay for the city's share of WAMADA costs, accompanied with increased capital costs as part of the WAMADA program. Now, that capital program has not yet been adopted, and they're still working it through, but we are forecasting what those capital costs will increase for the city. Taken together, those two will likely increase the city's required contribution to WAMADA, which is made through the NVTC, by between $400,000 and $600,000 per year. So, we've discussed this with the Budget and Finance Committee, basically as a problem. What we have not yet discussed is a solution, and so we propose a solution to that tonight, which would be to use the city's NVTA 30% allocation for FY '26 to pay for our WAMADA contribution. We have $700,000 available to do that. In the budget, as I proposed it to you, we did not program any 30% money through the NVTA. We did not program the use of any of those funds. And the reason for that is that we have $17 million worth of state and federal funds that have been awarded to the city for projects that we're administering right now, and our focus is on getting those projects moving, completing them successfully, and so we did not seek those NVTA funds for specific projects. And so, what we would propose here is to use that NVTA money to pay that WAMADA, which is a legitimate transit and transportation expense. We've actually asked the NVTA, and they've said that it is an allowable use of those NVTA funds. And so, that is what we would propose. We do think that as we go through from fiscal year to fiscal year, we need to revisit this. If there are NVTA-eligible projects that we would want to do in the city, then we'll have a choice to make. Do we want to use those funds for WAMADA, or do we want to use those funds to do those projects here in the city? But as of today, we have a great number of transportation projects even without that NVTA money.
Which we could otherwise use?
Well, it would add to that $17 million, and, you know, one of our big challenges as a city is to get those projects, get them completed. We're making very good progress on those, but that's the basic issue.
So, am I understanding this correctly, that it's essentially an IOU if we do it this way?
Yeah.
Basically utilizing the money?
It's not an IOU. It's basically using money that would go and be returned back into the regional 70% pot, so if we don't use it, we lose it.
Do we have projects that we would otherwise use?
Well, we have -- my point, I think, really is, we've got so many projects that we're trying to move through the process right now, that our challenge is having the capacity to do those projects. And so, and transportation projects are special because they are -- they involve right-of-way acquisition, easement acquisition, all the federal guidelines, et cetera. And so, our focus is, and has been, in the budget that is presented to you, is let's get those things moving and get them done before we go out and obligate ourselves for additional projects or funds.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I understand that, but that -- that's what I'm getting at, is you're just moving money that theoretically could be used for projects and backfilling that with the funding that gap that's being created because of WAMADA and the gas tax situation.
That's right. The WAMADA is -- those costs are -- we need to pay them no matter what, and so if we do not use the NVTA funds, then we need to raise the taxes or make cuts elsewhere to fund it. Those are essentially your choices.
But you're sort of just moving around the money and not doing things that you could theoretically otherwise do with that $300,000 to $600,000 shortfall?
I think in theory, you're correct, but in practical, as a practical matter, I'm not recommending any NVTA funds funded projects in FY '16.
Well, why? I understand that, but of course you're not, because the other option right now that we have is to cut the budget.
No. In the budget that I presented to you on March 9th, because we do not have capacity to do additional transportation projects, I did not recommend going for any NVTA money.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to shift the focus a little bit and say, this is good news, and I appreciate whatever staff work went into enabling, and I have a hunch some member work, too, went into enabling the city to use these funds for this purpose. It is a transportation-for-transportation use, as I understand it, and was not by any means a complete given that it would be allowed, so I just want to express my thanks for the work that went into enabling us to use it in this manner.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Ms. Oliver?
Can I just ask Mr. Shields, if we put the transportation planner back in the budget, would you have more capacity?
Well, I think, you know, where our real demand is, is on project management and project implementation, in terms of working those projects through. And so, I think that would probably be the top need. Now, when we've -- when we talk about how we can -- when we talk about sort of the markup process of items that you want in the budget, we could talk about that position in ways that we think we can fund it, potentially. But just one side note, we cannot use NVTA funds to fund that position. There'll have to be some other strategies.
So, just to --
Why don't we -- I don't think, if you had a chance to speak, why don't we let Ms. Conley go in and back to you, Mr. Burke, if we can?
All right. So, this is just a going-forward question about the NVTA money. I just want to clarify what I think I heard you say, which is, we're going to owe $400,000 to $600,000 every year, over and above what we had planned for?
Well, if gas prices go up, that will mitigate somewhat.
Okay.
So, the way that the gas tax works is that it's a percentage base, and so if the price goes down, then that tax amount goes down. If prices go back up, then the receipts go up. So, that's the lion's share of -- that's the big chunk of where the shortfall comes from, so that could get better in the future.
Okay.
I don't know what gas prices are going to do.
But we should assume that this is something that we -- obviously, you have been keeping track of it for a long time, and we will continue to have to track it and see what happens. Okay.
Well, we -- in terms of, you know, we do track it, but the NVTC did give us this information after I presented the budget, and so it came a little bit late. Where a transportation planner could be more helpful is that we'd be working possibly more closely with our -- with NVTC and that information, which we did ask for numerous times, but we might have gotten a little bit sooner in the process.
And on top of that, their board has not adopted this budget. It's still what they're projecting, and based on what is happening in FY '15, we have no reason to doubt it.
Yeah. So, the CEA, the capital piece of it, that is -- that's a recurring increase, and everyone in the region is paying that.
Mr. Burke?
So, I'll make two comments on this. One, I mean, I think sort of given the limited options that we have, along the same lines that Mr. Duncan made, I mean, it's probably the best option that we have, given sort of when this information came out, which I know that the shortfalls kind of came to light after the budget was printed. So, that limited our options right there. The fact that we sort of limited the tax rate that we were going to advertise limited our options further. So, I think, you know, with that context, this is probably the best solution, but I also think it's sort of eventually could be an unsustainable solution, and it's similar along the lines of other things that we've done, like dip into the reserves and utilize some other monies that were not necessarily one-time for operating expenses that I think ultimately may be unsustainable. This is sort of a different category of that, and I understand that. So, that's my first point. Point two is, I cannot here sit on this council in good faith and hear capacity issues over and over again, and I'll tell you why. We had a long discussion during the last council term that we were selling the water system. That was a huge financial loss before we ever sold it, because we weren't getting the rate of returns anymore. But that was also going to free up, however we spread it out, staff capacity, and also council capacity, given the workload issues. And yet, at every turn, when we get pressed about, well, where is funding for ex-planners so we can take on more transportation projects, is we don't have the capacity. Well, we need to figure it out, and I know it's a council request that we had before of how are we, given that, you know, we've shed the water system for the better, how are we going to recapture some of those savings, et cetera? So, and I don't think we've ever had a good answer to that, and it's just very frustrating, to say the least, to be hearing that even with what should amount to more staff time or more staff, however you allocate it, because I just think it's -- we've got to tackle some of the other projects that need to get done, and additional staffing we may need for doing things like transportation improvements, where it just can't be that we don't have the bandwidth, knowing that the water system has been sold, and that should have created the bandwidth, but it doesn't seem to have created the bandwidth, at least none that I'm seeing. So, my question is, you know, if you tally up all the hours that staff was spending on water issues, and council time that was being spent on water issues, which was substantial, especially in the last two years, what's happening with that time? It's going towards economic development, because I think we're doing more on that front, but why isn't it going to things like transportation? At some point, there's got to be an accounting of where that time is going, because I cannot sit here and every turn be faced with, well, we don't have the bandwidth.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Duncan?
I think Mr. Burke makes an interesting point, that it would be useful, as we present the final budget when we pass it, to educate the city about what we are doing in this budget, in the way of infrastructure, both for transportation and stormwater, sewer water, too, I think, parks, and the other areas that are included in the CIP, City Hall, continuing work on the library. I think it's an accurate thing to say that there is still a lingering perception in the public that, gee, you know, we're not doing as much on the city's side as we'd like to, even though right now, if you drive around town, you actually see considerable effort going on. But, you know, I think there's a natural lag between when the work is done and when people kind of wake up and smell the coffee and say, wow, there's really a lot of work getting done here around town. So, I think the budget's a good opportunity for us to message not just the things that make the headlines, which is, you know, the tax rate, and, you know, how much did the schools get? How much did the city get? But rather, a broader picture. So, I'd encourage the manager to make sure that the communications staff, as they always do, but redouble their efforts to thoroughly message the notion that this budget probably does more than any budget in recent memory to get to work on some of our infrastructure needs in a variety of areas and in a variety of places across town. Before I quit, I would --
I think it probably does highlight the need to tell that story better, because, I mean, there is so much activity going on, and the amount of transportation projects, specifically, you know, in this conversation, I think is, well, I mean, it's historic. I mean, I don't think there's been any time in the city's past when we've had this much money available to us that we've gone out and gotten. I mean, we've been very successful, and it's something to celebrate. But now, we need to get them done, and that's the focus. And particularly, you know, when we were talking with our regional partners, I think we should focus on getting these projects moving before we possibly have to start giving some money back or other things like that. We've got a lot of money in our 2.2 square miles to use wisely and effectively, and that's our focus right now.
And I don't think I was -- thank you, Mr. Manager. I don't think I was perhaps specific enough in commending Vice Mayor Snyder, who occasionally I'll sub for him when his work calls him away at some of these regional transportation meetings. And invariably, I'm struck by how the larger regional partners, Fairfax, Arlington, even the outer jurisdictions, hold him in very high regard and recognize his leadership in the transportation area specifically. And, you know, that is capital that is coming back to us in this example tonight, I think. But in many ways, that enabled us to scoop up some of this money and do this work. Finally, on another topic, I didn't want to neglect to thank the staff for scoping out the health insurance situation. It's, you know, good news. It's always a lot of write-ups in the blog land about, you know, or what are we doing to achieve efficiencies and, you know, trim costs where we should, and this is a good example of, you know, the staff going out and finding a better situation for us. Apparently, according to anecdotal information that I get, the benefits that will accrue to the staff in the new health plan are as good or better as what they have now, so I just want to say thanks for that, too.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the city staff. I also would like to recognize the school staff as well. I asked this question. If Falls Church got the same percentage from the state as does Loudoun County or Fairfax County, how much additional would that be in dollars? Okay? So, this is a critical question. We've talked about percentages in the past, and many of us have asked, one way or another, and our citizens are asking, why does it cost so much here? Well, here are the numbers, and these numbers ought to be made use of quite a bit. If Falls Church were -- had the same composite index as Fairfax County, last time I saw a neighboring county and a fairly wealthy county, if we had the same composite index as Fairfax County, we would be getting $1.9 million more in state tax dollars for education. That's about six cents on the tax rate. If we had the same composite index as Loudoun County, which is came out in our first work session, one of our citizens raised it, Loudoun County, by the way, has an average family income of only $3,000 less than Falls Church. Falls Church and Loudoun County, by some calculations, are the two wealthiest jurisdictions in the United States. So, Loudoun County's only $3,000 less in family income. If we had the same composite index as Loudoun County, we would be getting nearly $3.9 million in additional state aid. That's about 10 cents on the tax rate. So, whatever else about the discussion that we have going forward, it's important that one of the key questions for why our tax rates are the way they are is because of a composite index that is skewed badly against us, even when we compare ourselves with jurisdictions of similar income and neighboring Northern Virginia jurisdictions. So, I want to thank the schools. I think that's the first time we ever said, this is the amount we're actually being deprived as a result of a composite index. Not comparing ourselves to very different jurisdictions, but actually jurisdictions in Northern Virginia. So, that accounts for, in my view, a significant portion of the tax rate that we have to ask our citizens to cover. I also asked for, how much in dollars does the Arlington comparability amount to in additional costs in the school board request? And the response was, the difference would be approximately $535,000. So, I wanted to put those two data points in front of people, but particularly the first one, I found much larger impact than even I had thought of in terms of the unfairness of the composite index, even assuming we would continue to be a net donor to the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got a couple of follow-up questions to what we were discussing earlier. It sounds like, with respect to implementing transportation and other projects, the limiting factor is not planners, but basically project managers. Is that a fair statement? Or construction managers?
I think so. I think, you know, one thing that, you know, there's a lot of change happening with regional policy, and so that's one thrust of what additional capacity could do, is make sure we're going to all the NVTA and NVTC meetings. So, that's kind of -- that's one body of work, and then the other is project management. Council funded two project managers last year. We've hired those positions, and I think we're going to see good results from that. And so, I am comfortable right now with saying, let's let those people work and measure our progress. And so, the other need is, you know, is that regional piece. Are we missing things that could be going on at the policy level? And so, I think that's the discussion behind that position.
And also, approximately, I know it's going to vary somewhat from project to project, but I suspect it also is dollar-related. Is there a dollar-capacity amount? Like, you can manage $5 million of the projects a year, ballpark, $3 million? A rough idea how much you can manage a year?
Well, there are hard small projects and easy big projects, so it's hard to break it out that way. But I do think one thing that is just worth keeping in mind is, we have extraordinary things going on in the city right now, so it's not as if we're lacking for resources or projects. You know, the South Washington project is going to be transformative for a very large corridor of the city. That's the most expensive single project that's going through, but it's very complicated with the right-of-way issues and et cetera. But then, there's a whole host of smaller projects that will be touching very many parts of the city.
And just for council and the community's awareness, I just put up the website since I had my computer, and so this is just one page that has all the transportation projects, and on the top right, you can see where you can link to all the projects, dollar amount scope. And in your CIP notebook, you also have this document here that I have as a hard copy, page and a half of all the projects just on transportation. So, we are making good progress, as Mr. Shields has said, but we had a lot of backlog and with the new staff. I think we had five projects completed last year, and we'll see next year and a half similar positive outcome, but some of them are a two-year construction project before they get done.
And let me ask you with respect to, for example, like the ambulance revenues. It seems like we get these surprises with some regularity, that Arlington all of a sudden decides that we haven't been doing something right, or the numbers should be this, or Fairfax somebody. Do we ever audit these numbers, or what's our role as opposed to just being told, write the check for this amount? I mean, in other words, do we participate in a regular basis? Are we just told, here it is? How do we -- why do we have these surprises, it seems like, every year?
I don't know if you can really call them surprises. The ambulance revenue, yes, but in terms of the inter-jurisdictional agreements, we are a partner, a minority partner. We represent about 5% of, you know, another jurisdiction's cost, so when their millions go up, it still costs us money, and it's painful, because we're just not in a position to do anything about it.
Well, let me ask you this. I mean, do we have quarter -- do we have quarterly updates from there? Or we just say, end of the year, just tell us what we owe? I mean, it seems to me that ought to be appropriate.
We get bills, and we do watch trends, but in the last two years, there have been significant changes in the inter-jurisdictional contracts, particularly with public safety.
But again, so, for example, this number, did we know a year ago, six months ago, that this was going to come in different than we thought it was?
The ambulance revenue?
Yeah, the $136,000. Do we know on a quarterly basis, or we just got it end of the year, here it is?
Well, we've been asking for this number since October, so we're just getting it now.
So, I mean, because it may be that we can speak to the leadership of Arlington to make sure we get better information. I don't want to have, you know, a third of a penny on the tax rate surprises the day we get in here, you know, a couple of weeks before we're going to pass a budget. And so, I mean, I feel like if we need to interact with the leadership of Arlington to say, here's some things that aren't happening with our inter-jurisdictional agreements, that that's an appropriate conversation to have. And so, I would just ask, if there are other things like this, and we're not getting information we need for budgeting and other financial projections, that you let us know, so that we can try to intervene, so that we don't get these kind of surprises.
Sure.
Are there other things like this that we don't know of, that are, you know, for example, out there, you're saying, hey, we haven't heard, it's been, you know, nine months, what's the number on this? Are there other figures like this we're not aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
That would be the unknown unknown.
Again, we get the quarterly bills, we monitor them, we get their projections as they prepare their budgets. We've had this discussion about ambulance revenue, I would say for the last two or three years. It was a question of, how does the revenue get credited to a municipality? Is it because of the vehicle number, or is it because of the site where the pickup occurs? So, we've tried to work through those issues.
But so, don't we have an agreement that actually specifies that?
Well, we did not.
Well, no, for the ambulance fees? I know, we have an agreement, and it's-
What was your question about whether the ambulance originates here or there? What's its number? Why do we have that question?
The, you know, if their administrative practice is to support us the fees for everything that has a Falls Church address, we didn't question that. You know, the, when we saw the change, there is a change in the agreement in which the volunteers now receive ambulance fees for calls that they respond to with their own apparatus, which they do typically in the Boston area. And so we thought perhaps there had been some change to our fees relating to that change to the agreement. And that turned out not to be the case. It turned out to be because of their way that they were determining the situs of the cause. On the broader question, I agree completely. These surprises are pretty well unacceptable. And the biggest one, and the most famous one, was the jail costs, where we really had to go into the guts of their software system and, you know, wrestle with that to the ground. And we found out that their methodology was an error. But that was a huge whipsaw for our budget process and completely unacceptable. This coming late in the process, I think for them, probably $130,000 is something that you would not even ever talk about publicly, because you would, you just, it wouldn't be an issue. For us, it is an issue, and they need to have a heightened awareness of that.
Would you give us a list of the different, you know, reimbursements that flow back and forth? Just, you know, here's the 10 things and where they stand. In other words, we got information late, we don't know what's going on with this. Any questions you might have? And then we, as a council, can maybe possibly, or myself, get together with the folks at Arlington and say, you know, we got a few things we'd like to sit down and work out with you guys. Because I think it's a problem. Every time, every year I've been at council, we've got some big surprise, and it always seems to be not a good kind of surprise. And I think we need to try to eliminate those. I don't know if anyone else?
No, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I think that's absolutely correct. I'm wondering, I mean, if their administrative practices are to do such and such, can we just inform them that our administrative practices are not to pick up the phone, you know, after the budget's presented, and we'll talk to you again after the 1st of July? I mean, you're completely, it's not probably $136,000 is something they wouldn't talk about. Certainly, it's not, but for us, it is. And, you know, we just, we need for them to understand that it just can't go on this way. I mean, we cannot find out information like this, you know, three weeks before we pass our budget, or at least it doesn't seem to me like we should. And it also does seem often to happen with Arlington. Rather than with Fairfax, our arrangements with Fairfax on social services and health and so forth, are there any landmines out there that we have had any problems with? Any of these kinds of things?
Well, when the jail issue came up, that was such a big surprise. We did a complete assessment of all of our contract management for all of our inter-jurisdictional contracts. And through that review process, we really tried to avoid, you know, the whole intent of that process was to avoid surprises like this. We have generally not gotten surprises from Fairfax County, but with Arlington County, we've gotten surprises on their share of the E-911 calls. We've gotten, well, just a whole string of increases. And I don't think it's from a lack of contract management on our side. I think it's from seemingly insignificant administrative changes on their side that they don't understand the implications of them to us.
Other questions, comments on this matter?
One thing on the insurance piece. Would it also, and I know that we recently rebid the life insurance and long-term disability insurance, is there any reason why we might want to consider rebidding it this year again?
We did rebid it again recently, and so that's been very effective for us to keep those costs. We had a big step down in costs about four years ago, and we've been able to keep them flat or lower costs than they were as well.
But that was bid four years ago?
No, we've rebid it since then, on numerous occasions.
And how did those turn out?
Page one here, I tried to specify them out, but life insurance and long-term was bid last year, so we're in the second year of a three-year set rate for those.
Oh, so it's a, it's a set rate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it. So it's, we couldn't rebid it right now anyways?
Correct.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
So when's the next time we could rebid those?
We're in year two, so next year's the third year, so we'd be starting the process.
For rebidding? And they're both, the life insurance and long-term get bid together, is that?
I think we have. We've allowed people to bid on them separately, and very often, the low bid is someone who's going to handle both of them, and I think that's currently the case.
But it sounds like the earliest time we could even effectively bid them is next year, given how it works.
Well, let me get back with you on that. I think we, for instance, last time, we had three years, but we rebid it early, and we got a lower price. And so I think we do have, in our contract documents, I think we retain that, the ability to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we got pretty good results for bidding the regular health insurance, so if staff can just take a look at whether it makes sense to, tries to squeeze some more savings, you know, by rebidding it, and employees ending up with the same, it might be worth the effort to rebid the life and long-term disability again.
If I could, I neglected to make a disclosure I wanted to make earlier. If I could do that now. I have consulted with the city attorney and make the following declaration before city council's consideration of the proposed fiscal year 16 city budget. My wife is an employee of the Fostered City Schools. She is, however, a member of a group of three or more individuals that may be affected by the approval of the fiscal FY16 budget. After consultation with the city attorney, I can participate in the matter fairly objectively in the public interest. Do you have something to say, Ms. Conley?
I do, indeed. I have consulted with the city attorney and make the following declaration before city council's consideration of the proposed fiscal year 16 city budget. I'm an employee of the Fostered City Schools. I am, however, a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the approval of the FY16 budget. After consultation with the city attorney, I can participate in the matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. Are there other budget questions, comments? Vice Mayor Snyder?
I had a quick one. Police radios. Would it be, can we add that into the CIP at this point and maybe explain why we shouldn't? We shouldn't?
The, so adding the police radios in, the cost for those is $582,000.
Right.
If we were to do it, we would recommend, the ideal situation would be to replace them all at one time. The risk that comes in doing a phase approach, which the chief spoke to, and she, I think, you know, she's thought about that and studied that. The risk of that, though, is that we would have two radio systems operating at the same time, and there's the potential for miscommunication.
But you could procure them all at one point, but you could, you could fund them over time.
I'll need to check on that, in terms of whether there's a financing mechanism-
I'd like to know the options for moving forward on the police radios.
Okay. Other, Ms. Conley?
Mr. Shields, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we talked about the treasurer's request to have an additional staff person in her office that would cost about $50,000 or $60,000 a year, but she was projecting would bring in $200,000 to $300,000 in revenue that that person would be collecting as a collections agent. Can you just talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, that is the, what the treasurer has proposed verbally. I haven't gotten a written proposal in terms of how, you know, exactly what the scope of work of the position would be and that type of thing. What is happening right now is that we have a temporary employee that was hired through a company, and it's the company that the council approved the contract for at your last meeting. And that individual's principal responsibility was water bill collections as they continued to come in post-sale. And the treasurer's been training that employee and using that employee for collections, and has been doing so very effectively. And so essentially, her proposal is to continue, to have a budget allotment to be able to continue to do that. And her estimate has been between $200,000 and $300,000 of additional revenue. These would be typically in the areas of parking fines, things not, like real estate, we have a very high collection rate on personal property also is, I think, relatively high. So these would be some of the smaller things, like special trash pickup fees, parking tickets, and that type of thing. She could speak to that position better than I could, and I think a written proposal would probably be the best way to handle that.
Okay. So if we were to say, after we look at the written proposal, that this is something we'd like to look at, how would that show up in the budget?
It would show up as an expenditure in the treasurer's side, and then we would need to talk with the treasurer to make sure that we were very realistic about the revenue side, and then we would adjust the revenue side as well.
Okay.
Based on a plan.
And is that the kind of thing we could say? Can you give us an update every three months to see if this additional expenditure is indeed paying off with increased revenues?
And if I could follow up on your question, if you don't mind. These fees that might come in, are they essentially one-time fees, like fees that weren't collected in the past year or two, or fees that would likely be an ongoing source of revenue? Or is it just catch-up from maybe a little bit of, you know, not strong oversight the past year or so? Or is it something that in perpetuity would generate the revenues?
I think the treasurer would be best positioned to answer that question.
Okay.
My other question just goes back to the capital projects and Mr. Baruch's question, and I just want to tie together what you, Ms. Shields, have said about capital projects. What you're saying is that we have expanded the number of projects that we're doing, so the personnel that had been working on water sale or water things have now been reassigned to other projects. Is that, or?
Well, that's a complex question. I mean, I think, you know, the water was mostly my time, the city attorney's time, finance, but really, it was not very much public works time. You know, they were always pretty carefully separated between water activities and public works, which we've retained, so that, so that the freed-up capacity's really been the council's time and sort of the staff that you spend a lot of time with.
Right, okay. So as far as the capacity of the staff that we have to do the projects that we have in front of us and any other future projects?
For transportation, over the last two fiscal years, council approved a CIP manager position, a CIP engineer, and then a grants manager, which was really critical with all these funding sources. All three of those positions, one was in FY14, the other two was in this fiscal year, are now on board, are oriented and trained enough that they're actually able to work independently. They're all funded with CIP projects. They are not locally funded out of the general fund. So all those projects, we're doing time, cars, and tracking and billing against it. That gave us the capacity for the transportation projects and one of the positions helping on facilities.
Other, Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Manager, could you give us, at our next meeting, advice on the question of the Creative Cauldron funding situation? We've received a number of communications from interested citizens, and I'm generally familiar with the issue, but could you advise us on what you think would be the best thing to do going forward?
So in terms of a markup list, I think what we're, what we can do tonight is take notes on what the council wants on a markup list. And so this would be essentially a motion to have Creative Cauldron on that list, or an increase in the funding for Catch of $25,000, I believe, is, is that what the request is?
I'm asking you what it is that I want to ask.
The unfunded budget needs would be increased operating funding for Catch, for which would be competitively awarded similar to this year. This year, Catch was the recipient, but it could be for any eligible nonprofit.
Creative Cauldron was the recipient?
As proposed in the city manager's budget.
So right now, Catch is funded at $25,000, and I think the request is to increase that to $50,000.
$20,000 with an increase for 25.
Okay. So it's at 20 now, and increase it by 25 to $45,000 is the request. So the net impact on a markup sheet would be a $25,000 expense.
And could you include that in whatever documents you're preparing for our consideration?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Shields, if we are funding the CIP engineers and managers out of the projects which are currently ongoing, then if we don't bring any new projects in when these are done, these are positions which will go away. And what will it take to make sure that we continue to have the projects in our pipeline that we need for our transportation infrastructure?
A good transportation planner.
No further questions.
And do you have potential funding sources, or, I mean, in reviewing the budget, have we?
Well, I will say this, you know, the city has been successful in the past in getting state and federal funds without that position. We are, you know, because there's so much heavy-hitting work happening at the Regional Level right now, we're worried about being left out of the loop on important discussions. I think we've been able to keep abreast of it, but we are not really masters of it, I think is probably where we are right now. And so that's maybe a fuller response. I mean, we have been very successful in getting funding for the city, but could we be more planful in how we do it? I think that is one big plus. In some respects, when we've gotten grants, we get the money, and then we try to work it through something that actually works here, and we've struggled mightily sometimes in the past with that. And spent hours and hours of time trying to make, you know, a square grant fit and a round hole.
So my concern is that the transportation infrastructure, not only in Falls Church, but in the state of Virginia and in the nation as a whole, is on the verge of becoming obsolete. And this is going to become a bigger issue, and there is going to be a lot more competition for the funds that are available at both the federal and state level. I'm very concerned that if we don't have the planner in place, that we will get left behind after this round of projects. And I would like to see a way to try to put this planner back in the budget. I'd like to see a proposal for a way.
So in broad terms, the proposal would be to use the strategy that we used for the projects in the past, which would be to charge a portion of this individual's salary to specific capital projects. The other thing we've discussed, but we think could be a little bit problematic, is using developer fees to pay for it. We think we could make the nexus, because development raises transportation issues, but we need to make sure that those development fees are allowing us to conduct our inspections timely and effectively. That's job number one. I think we're doing, I think we're well-positioned to do that in the budget that I've presented to you. So I think that the proposal will have those two funding sources that we could bring to the council as an option to fund it. Using CIP to pay for a position, that erodes the deliverable, because money's going for salaries as opposed to bricks and mortar and stuff. So that's one drawback to it. And then the other drawback is, it's not sustainable in the long term potentially. So if we rely on that too heavily, that could end badly.
This position also will not, is intended, is not doing all projects. It is to do the regional work that was mentioned by Mr. Shields. So the MBTA, the NPTC, the WAMADA inside of Route 66, outside of Route 66, and those policy decisions, which, as my three transportation liaisons get to see a lot of in emails and meetings, is pretty critical, because they will be road-oriented and not transit, they will be road-oriented and not multimodal. So trying to have our voice there now is becoming more critical than probably in the past. So we will have to look carefully, and we do think there's some options to try to fund it, but it has to be carefully done, because CIP will not fund 100% of it, and MBTA money will not be able to fund it, because it's not project-oriented. It's an important position, but some challenges.
Are there questions about CIP? And some of that's been kind of mixed in together. Any questions on CIP at all? Any questions on CIP at all?
Just one question about what you said about something not being sustainable. If, if we were able to find our way clear to use some developer proffer money in cases where the project had transportation impacts, to fund the transportation planner, to help fund a transportation planner position, is, does that seem risky or something in some way? Is that what you meant when you said that's not sustainable?
I was referring to the, the fees that developers pay for site plan, building permits.
So in other words, you'll be able to play the, pay the planner as long as we're getting those fees. If we hit a trough and we get no development, then that planner has got to go find something else to do.
That's right.
Okay, understood. Just what Ms. Mester says calls further attention to the importance of dialogue, particularly with Arlington County, on the I-66 project. Because what she said is absolutely correct, you know, there's great potential, I think, there for us to scoop up some money for multimodal work. But we do have to be very vigilant about that. And the mayor, of course, has got us meeting with the Arlington County Board once. And I think he plans to do that again. And I'd suggest that the next time we meet with them, we make that a very top focus of our conversations with them.
In addition, I think I mentioned before, I had a conversation, and the name is escaping me, the head of, it's not VDOT, but the...
Jennifer Mitchell, Director of DRPTI, I believe you said.
Yes. And she's willing to come and speak with us. And I think that'd be a great opportunity, once the budget's done, to actually convey our thoughts directly with her. She's very receptive to hearing our input about the Inside the Beltway project and what the specific needs of Falls Church are. And so I would suggest that maybe we could try to tee that up, Mr. Shields, for some time, maybe in May.
And I have a meeting in Richmond with Ms. Mitchell and the Full Ted Stack. And so I was going to touch base with her on her calendar then, later this month.
That'd be great. Sure.
At one of our recent meetings, the parking garage by the library came up. And it, if I remember correctly, several other members of council were just questioning the need for a parking garage next to the library. So I just would like to talk about that a little bit. It seems like a lot of money for that few parking places. One of the reasons people like our library the way it is is because you can walk to it. So do we, I know, and we have a need for parking, is that the place to do it? Is this the place to put it? So I just, I don't want to just sign off on that one and say, yes, we're ready to do that if, if there are other, if there are concerns there.
The planning commission's recommend, recommendation for that, which is incorporated in the manager's proposed budget, has that for FY17. So it's not going to be appropriated in the next year's budget, being our long-range planning. And based on council's input and specific requests for additional study analysis, we were going to then take the time to work that with the planning department, looking at the Park Avenue Great Street concept, how the parking lot at City Hall impacts the area, some broader parking analysis, because we had just done it on City Hall campus, working with our business partner. So I would propose that we could take this next budget year calendar cycle for you all to analyze that a little fuller and have some more detail for council, if that would be adequate, and leave it in FY17 to be adjusted during the next five-year planning cycle. I will not have additional information in detail enough, I think, to answer a lot of the questions, lease options, other, you know, financing mechanisms by April 27.
Do you have your thoughts you'd like to share?
I'm just not sure that that is actually the best use of that $3 million to put that parking garage there. And I think there are others that have that concern. So those are my, those are my thoughts.
I think others, I mean, I for one, share that concern. I think there's much more efficient ways to get parking, such as a lease for the surface parking furthest away from the building, which I think is probably the least likely to be used, particularly at library hours, which can be in the evenings or weekends when probably very few people are there. So I absolutely share those concerns, and I express them to some degree at our regular work session on the CIP. But I think others as well. Mr. Duncan's nodding his head. I believe either that he's going to sleep.
No, no, I'm listening with rapt attention.
I know you are, like, to everything I say, to every word you say, just like my kids.
Do we still have an additional work session on the CIP?
What was scheduled was the March 23 presentation.
So do you have questions now you'd like to bring up? Okay, any other thoughts or questions about the CIP?
Yeah, my question on that was, what's the best way to incentivize getting the private sector to give us some suggestions about how to deal with parking downtown? I mean, we're working the Kaiser angle, and we're looking at some other possibilities, I guess. But if leaving the money in there, as staff suggests, for FY17 is, you know, what you suggest, then I guess I'm okay with that, with the understanding that Ms. Conley laid out there, which is that that's just a placeholder for us to be able to talk about this and all the various possibilities, including some which might not cost anywhere near that amount of money. So the only budgetary impact is just where the debt service shows for that 3-point-something million on our bar graph. And it's, you know, it's a number, but it's not a huge number.
Just by way of update as well, without going into the details, I guess it's probably been two weeks or so ago now, Vice Mayor Snyder, the city manager, myself, I think Jim Snyder as well, met with some executives at Kaiser about continuing and possibly expanding the parking use at the garage. And I think it was a very good meeting. There's nothing signed along those lines, but it was an excellent sort of next step. And so I hope that that will be able to be continued and expanded in the future because it's an integral part, I think, of our downtown plans. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Mr. Shields?
Well, it was, it was a very good meeting, and it was made at the mayor and vice mayor's request. And very good dialogue. And we have already had follow-up with their staff to try to implement with, with a new agreement what was discussed there. And so I think it was, could take another step in a positive direction.
Great. Other comments, questions? Do people want to start kind of showing their hands a little bit about the budget and where they want to land or where they think they would like to land? I mean, at some point, we got to start, we have a budget on the table, which is the city manager's budget, which calls for a four-cent tax increase at the present. Are there folks who would like to have consideration of other budgets going forward? We need to start kind of putting, I think, things on the table for discussion purposes at a minimum. And then also things we may vote on in the next several weeks. I see everyone using their iPads or whatever it looks like. Everyone is avoiding eye contact at all costs with me, which I can understand completely. But is there anyone, Mr. Duncan?
I do not want to be accused of avoiding eye contact with the mayor. Just briefly, I just wanted to say tonight that, you know, it's well-known that I've said in multiple public meetings and conversations with my colleagues on the city council and the school board and with staff, that restraining our operating spending is critical to achieve a budget that meets reasonable city and schools' needs and keeps the tax rate level as we undertake an extremely ambitious capital program on both the schools and city side. In our form of government, the staff has to take the lead in proposing how to match resources with needs. I've offered a few suggestions, seconded the suggestions offered by some others along the way. And I continue to look for other possibilities. Still time. Got some good news tonight. Would encourage the staff to continue to scrub and, and bring us further ideas. I won't catalog the six or seven things that have been most often mentioned, the investment pool interest income increase, and the stepped-up collections by the treasurer. The, one area I did want to focus just a little bit of time on is the contingency, closeout, carryover, whatever we call the money that we end up with at the end of each fiscal year, that we basically program into the next fiscal year. On the city side, that, that had been a fairly substantial amount of money, mostly because of the imbalance between the budget year and the tax year. We corrected that through leadership of the last council. And I thought that was a very important process reform, which hopefully will get us to the end of this year on the city side without, you know, any kind of a surplus of, of note, perhaps not at all. And I would encourage the schools' folks, who, and their information to us showed us, you know, their situation at the end of their fiscal years, which indicated that there is a certain amount of money that they sort of bank on carrying over into the next year. In my view, this is the year where we need to squeeze down as tightly as we can to matching our revenue that we collect with the revenue that we're capable of spending. And I say that because there seems to be something different in the air this time. I mean, Mr. Snyder and others here have seen more budgets than I have. But I'm struck by the, the frequency and the intensity with which people speak to me in various places across town about the tax situation. And these are people who are, you know, I would define as, as, you know, very supportive of the schools, very supportive of, you know, the quality of life that we have here in Falls Church. And yet, they are voicing a, a level of anxiety and concern that I think is, is different this year. And I'm not totally sure why. I think some of it's got to do with the economy generally. Some of it, I think, might have to do with the variability in the assessment increases, which this time do seem to track a little bit more along the lines of, you know, how houses sold in your neighborhood. So, you know, the house next door to Fred sold for $900,000. And this year, Fred's assessment went up 9%. So although the overall city average assessment was maybe only 5%, you know, Fred's feeling a real hurt and, and some anxiety about, gee, if this keeps up every year for several years, my, my fixed income or my income, which is going to be fixed in a few years, is, that's going to be a problem for me. And so all that leads me, I said some time ago in October, that if we got to the point where assessments were higher than 5% overall, that I would actually ask us not only to level, keep the tax rate level, but actually to recognize that reducing it to some extent would be responsive to the concerns that we are hearing from some quarters. I don't have a well-worked-out proposal to put on the table reflecting that view, but I did want to take note that I do believe it is out there. And I do think the council should weigh that in its consideration of where we land on the tax rate finally. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if no one else wants to speak, I'll, I'll go ahead and say my little piece. You know, as always, seems like another difficult tax year. We have competing priorities, very, you know, great priorities, our schools, our city services and the like. But I just think continuing to raise taxes is just not the solution. As I said several months ago, we need to live within our means. And we need to strive for a balanced community, affordable for folks on a fixed income, and not squeeze out our elderly and those of moderate means. We're not competing with other jurisdictions just on the basis of salary. We're also competing with tax rates, on tax rates. And as Mr. Duncan just said, our constituents, I think, are telling us they're nearing the breaking point on taxes. At least I've heard a fair amount from people. I suspect you all have as well. And so I, I would support efforts to keep the tax rate flat, as I did last year. And I believe that's achievable. It's going to take some hard work in the next couple of weeks. But that's where I'd like to head. Would anyone have any comments, Mr. Baruk?
So I think what I was trying to accomplish when we had the first reading is really try to meet some of the capital and some of the critical unfunded items in the CIP, such as the radios, some significant paving that's still not being done. So I'd still like to figure out a way of meeting those with the notion of not raising taxes. Probably impossible, but like to see if that can be done. But my, my goal, as I've repeatedly stated, is, you know, we need to go on a diet on the operating and meet the capital needs. So we've done some possible thinking about, you know, living within the means of whatever the organic growth is in the city. And the tax rate, any tax rate increases would essentially address capital needs. This is one that I think could be a good model. It's one that I've tried to push for the last few years, but I don't think we had support for it, at least not in the last budget, nor did I see support for it in the upcoming budget this year. But I think that's where our focus needs to be, is on the capital. And that's why I propose trying to dedicate a certain amount of pennies however we come out, despite some of the, the reporting that happened in the local newspaper about dedicating pennies so it's very transparent of what's going towards capital. And right now, the budget, the tax rate, as I understand it, doesn't, isn't really, the capital program for this year isn't really supported by the tax rate, per se, other than some debt financing, which I don't think is a, is a good way to do budgeting. So however we come out, I'd like to see a clearer picture of how much money we're actually dedicating, how many cents of the tax rate towards capital for next year as we try to tackle some of those bigger picture items.
Mr. Shields, can you provide that information?
I think that was, that was sort of a non-sequitur answer, the answer.
Oh, but you've, you've...
We're not, we're not.
Well, we are, we've got money going, we have money going to capital improvements this year that translate into pennies on the dollar. I mean, I don't know if you were seeking that information. Well, we are. I mean, we're spending, the city manager just said he's not able to spend, you know, any more money, frankly, on capital. And I guess what I, I thought your question was...
When I ask this question point-blank is, how many cents on the tax rate are supporting capital in this budget as is proposed? The answer I got back is zero.
Zero. Yeah, in the tax rate, the tax rate is not being used to support the capital program. So everything is either grants or fund balance and, or water sale proceeds. And, and so built into, you know, ultimately, and, you know, in the future, to restore funding for pay-as-you-go and that type of thing.
And my point has always been on those things that are sort of less than the long-term capital as we define it, such as like buses or things like that, that normally pay within the pay-go realm. There is no funding from the tax rate this year on those items. Period. Now, if other members want to sort of say it's happening, or X, Y, and Z, it's not happening. And my point has been, it's not sustainable. And we have to figure out a mechanism to try to dedicate some level on the tax rate to try to do that. And if the answer is not doing it this year, fine. But my question to members who are opposed to that approach, whether this year or last year, is, how are we going to do the capital? What is your plan for the long term? Because we're going to get through this budget, but how are we going to get through next year when again, we're faced with the situation where we don't put any effort towards doing pay-go? I don't think it's sustainable over in the long run. Members have a plan, put it out there.
Okay, do others want to speak? Anyone else want to speak at this time? You don't have to, I mean, obviously, if you don't want to. Okay. Well, is there anything else to be said tonight? Does anyone else wish to speak? Should we just adjourn our meeting? Sure.
Mr. Shields, on page, on page four of the handouts that you gave, one of the, question five was, what are the factors behind the relatively lower tax rates for Fairfax County, Arlington County, Alexandria, and Fairfax City? And you list five factors there. What Mr. Snyder did tonight was say that 10 cents of the tax rate, 10 cents of the Falls Church premium, shall we say, is because of the LCI. What can we, can we put a sense on each of these things? Like the economies of sale, how many extra cents is that on our tax rate? We can, the, our commercial tax versus residential tax? How many extra cents are we, are we forced to pay because of the size of our commercial tax base? It's sort of like...
The difficulty with it is, is for each comparison, there would be a different analysis.
Right.
You would have a different set of numbers for each of these, for every county or city that we're comparing ourselves against. For instance, Fairfax County, we have a very similar commercial to residential ratio, but we have a dissimilar composite index. In Arlington County, we have the exact same composite index, but a very different... In Arlington County, we have the exact same composite index, but a very different commercial.
Right.
So, it just, it would get to be a little bit...
It doesn't need to be exact. What I'm just wondering is, what is the premium for living in a small city that doesn't have the federal government installations, doesn't have the dullest, tall road corridor?
Right.
That doesn't have the federal court in Alexandria? What's the premium that we're just stuck with having to pay because of our size or because of the other subsidies that all the other jurisdictions get that we don't? Is that 30 cents?
Well, when we've compared them by size, then if you just take the economies of scale, on average, the smaller jurisdictions have a 13-cent higher tax rate than the larger jurisdictions.
Right.
So, that's one answer to the question. It appears to be, just on economies of scale, there's a 13% premium for being small and being able to control your own destiny and having all the benefits that come with being small. But those economies of scale work against you. So, we can, we could try to do, I think it'd probably be less of a scientific exercise than it might be...
But I don't think it could be a scientific exercise. But it's just that the premium that is there that we're paying to live here.
Right.
Because we have to take care of our own streets. Where, is that a penny on the tax rate because we have to take care of our own streets? I think it just might be an interesting way to look at the tax rate to say, are we really overcharging our citizens? Or are we just, because of our unique situation, this is how it has to be? And I don't know that answer.
I think Councilmember Conley raises some good points. The, the quality of knowledge about the factors that were really uniquely stacked against us. The LCI is one. Another one is the inability to annex taken away. Another one is the city has, or the state, rather, has refused to pay its public safety funding that was supposed to be the quid pro quo for getting rid of the ability to annex. The, a lot is stacked against, increasingly against cities and especially Northern Virginia jurisdictions. So, helping our citizens understand the basic question, why are they paying what they're paying, is hopefully something we can advance during this budget process. I also think that after the reports this evening, it sounds like we ought to be able to get under the 134. But I'm not going to commit to any particular number. I'll be interested to see what the mayor comes up with in terms of what we're not going to fund. But I won't, as I said before, I'm not going to sacrifice the quality of education or basic services here. So, that's going to be number one and I'll vote for whatever it takes to do that. But I also want to continue to work on reducing the cost where we possibly can.
Okay, anything else for tonight? Or should we go to council comments and call it an evening? Any comments, council requests, calendar issues? Okay, should we go ahead and adjourn then? Excuse me?
Regular session on Monday night.
Okay, thank you all.
Move to adjourn?
Yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, sentience, we're adjourned.